Order 532, if so called.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Salquero?
Here.
And Mayor DeMoor.
I'm here. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to add, item five, discussion on retiring health care and move everything else, move five and six down to six and seven. There's no objections to that.
So then I'm making the approved agenda as per that.
I'll support. Any other changes? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeMoor?
Yes.
Councilmember Salquero?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, citizen comment items not on the agenda. No? Just kidding. Item four is going to be discussion regarding inspection services we receive from the state.
I'm going to recluse myself from this discussion because of my business relationship with Cascade. So I'll return to the room and that is over.
Good evening, Mayor, State Council. As I was directed by the council, I did submit an RFQ for building inspection services. I've also obviously included Cascade, who is our current provider for this, and had a conversation with them about two weeks ago once this happened. And obviously, there is, you know, they're obviously want to know, you know, what the council, you know, is this something that the council, you know, they want to be a building official. And from the administrative, from where I sit administratively, we really don't have any issues with Cascade. I know there's a couple of things that are out there, and I think maybe this is the forum to bring those to, and maybe we can try and address this. The, what, tonight here is Brian Wilson, also township manager of Ben Swayze, they're going to come, I think Brian's just going to come talk to you about the services they provide, and then they'll probably take any questions you may have, and if there's any feedback you have for them, you know, and then go from there.
Sure.
Brian?
Thank you all. I'm Brian Wilson with Cascade Inspection Services. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to council and discuss that RFP that went out on building official services and address those concerns, I think mostly affecting redevelopment of the downtown. I put together, I don't, I've got four or five minutes, a quick run through a few things with me to take whatever questions you might have, so we can swing those around. You know, basically, I've got, passing the handout, I've got some background on the codes, where they come from, how we handle them in our department, and explanation of some of those items, and in the back I hand out some copies of those relevant code sections. I'm hoping that we can develop a better understanding of why we do the things we do, and why the City of Lowell needs to enforce, in my opinion, the codes that way. Maybe instill a little confidence in our services, and hopefully extend the partnership that we started six years ago. So jumped in any time with questions, too. Building codes were established by Public Act 230, that's a statewide construction code. So at the local level, we don't have the authority to change the code, to ignore a code, or create it all. We do interpretations of the code, but it's a statewide code and should be enforced the same way across the state. It's based on ICC codes, International Code Council, and adopted at the state level. There are the minimum requirements. Again, that's what we're looking for, you know, a lot of times architects, designers will have a higher standard. Our task is to just enforce the minimum code requirements that the state has adopted. I see Chief Pupila has the residential code. We also have the building code, which is what most of the mixed-use buildings downtown are going to fall under. And because that limits your options a little bit, there's rehabilitation code, and that's where it really gets technical on some of these residential units downtown. But it does provide some extra options that the other book is not, so that's why it can be a good tool for people. Those are the building code regulations. I mean, we also have electrical, plumbing, mechanical, energy code, we've got all of the rules that the state adopts, different public acts, and, you know, there's a binder list stick in my office that addresses all that. We don't have time for all that. So what we do is, we have long-term partnerships with all of our customer communities. Actually, the City of Lowell is the only one that had a renewal period, which I think is because of your charter.
There is a provision on the charter that we can only keep agreements 10 years, but that's, I think that's followed in this case, I'm not 100% sure, but.
So the rest of our agreements are all perpetual, and that's what we're looking for, long-term agreements that both parties agree are mutually beneficial. We're not-for-profit. All of the fees that we collect for our services are used in the, in providing those services. And over the years, we continually add to those things, like providing, you know, online permitting, you know, and we do, we do electronic files that we get to all our communities, detailed reporting. We have full-time staff, we have professional inspectors, we spend a lot of time, you know, working on being consistent and fair in how we interpret the code. Next-day scheduling, daily office hours, simple things, but we do get a lot of contact, even from people, developers of the City of Lowell, we're working with Fromm on their building, which I don't think has took planning commission yet, they've been talking with us. We've talked to a resident that's doing some work above, residential unit above one of the buildings downtown, King Millings coming to talk to us about their project. So this is all happening behind the scenes while they're working with you folks in planning, they're talking to us about, okay, how does this building regulations work? We're here to assist the contractors, residents, and developers figure out solutions to meet the minimum code requirements, and that's why we're having those meetings, that's why we have office hours and are available for those folks. So, that's kind of the quick two-minute rundown of what we do, and some of the codes that are involved, the specific issues that I've heard of, and feel free to, you know, let me know if there's others. It's about when permits are required, so that's under R105, and I've attached copies of those pages. Basically, it's required for anything, any alteration, repair, change, and that it exempts painting, papering, tiling, carpet, cabinetry, counters, similar finish work. Okay? That's where we get into as an office policy saying, if you remove drywall and expose framing, then a permit's required. Out of the 1,500 permits that we issue, there's a handful of those, building permits throughout our department, there's a handful of those, five or six, a handful. Most of the permits that are, that are small like that, where someone would just say, take two sheets of drywall down to remove some bulkheads. Most of the permits are when you gut a room, right, you remodel your bathroom, your kitchen, or a larger interior remodel. That's where the bulk of those permits come in. But there are a few small ones. Most of my talks about historic buildings are in the right direction, yes? So the second page, existing historic buildings and residential units are sprinklers required, and most of this, my discussion with the last resident who was trying to develop down here was about whether or not he had to sprinkle, and the costs that are involved with that. So I'm going to focus on that, again, if there's other things, let me know. Under the building code, which is the big one, big book that I showed you, any residential use occupancy requires sprinkling. So if we were going to build a new, you know, ten-year department building, it's going to have to be sprinkled. So for existing buildings, that's where the rehab code can come into play. And are sprinklers required in this? It depends. It's complicated. Generally, existing buildings that are not modified can exist and not have any other regulations applied to them, okay? No permits required, you can come in and do your flooring, carpet, trim, paint, any of those kinds of alterations you can do without a permit and continue to occupy. When you choose to remodel, a Level 1 alteration in the rehab code is when you remove a finishing material and replace it. So if you wanted to take down drywall to refinish your bathroom in one of these units, you could replace that drywall in the whole room and not have to sprinkle your building. Okay? If you get into a Level 2 is where you reconfigure. So if you want to, maybe your bathroom's not big enough, you need to add a closet, you need to turn two rooms into, you're changing the walls, okay? That's a Level 2 alteration. So if you do over 50% of the floor area, then you are required to sprinkle. But if you do less than that, you are not. So if you think about that, what the code's allowing somebody to phase in these small projects, okay? They're allowed to do these small projects and not have to bring the entire floor up to code. But if you take on a larger project, and you're putting that kind of resources into it, then the code requires that you do the sprinkling as well. Does that make sense? So if you change the use, sprinklers are required. So if you're in a building downtown that might have had storage on the second floor, and you've got a mercantile or business and it's used for storage, or advanced or something else that wasn't residential, you're changing it to residential, then maybe you have to sprinkle that up. There's no options, there's no further options under the rehab code that a designer could apply.
When you say sprinkle, so you would just do the floor that you're redoing, or would you have to do the entire building?
You would do the-
Doing the downstairs?
Yeah, you would do the floor area that's part of the work area. So if you weren't doing work on the main floor-
So you wouldn't have to do that, you would just do, okay.
Correct.
Could you explain where that comes from, specifically the National Fire Prevention Act and fire blocking? I know you mentioned it, fire blocking, can you explain what that is and why it's important?
Well, we're talking about the fire suppression.
Right, but you also, on the first page, you have fire blocking when you're gutting a room.
Oh, okay.
Can you talk about that, why it's important?
Yeah, I mean, that's two different things. The fire blocking is just, basically prevents the spread of fire, we want to keep the areas to not draw air from other parts of the room, and if you have a small fire, it becomes a big fire. So if you have a receptacle in a wall, you're required to block that in that instance where we're talking about the bulkheads, okay? And if you block that, the fire can't get any air, it doesn't get big. It spreads, if it's not fire blocked, it can spread through that, go to other areas in the building, and then we have a big problem. So that's the reason, for even on the small projects, why you would, you know, why we issue permits. The NFPA for fire suppression is a regulation that's in the building code. Basically, there's a section that just refers to that, and that gives us a whole bunch of other requirements as to how that's installed, but generally, the building code outlines when you need, when you need to install a system. So, I mean, developers have options, we don't design the buildings for them, we can't, they need to, Public Act 299, the occupational code requires these commercial buildings be designed by a professional, an architect, and engineer, so part of our job is to make sure that those plans are sealed. They provide us with the appropriate code summary, code review that outlines how they designed the plan and shows compliance with these provisions of the code. We review those plans and will issue a permit if they comply.
Upon that, once they approve it, and then you come back and inspect it, and something's not to code, where does that fall back, under the architect, the designer, the construction company, to go back and make those fixes upon you not approving something or a violation? I mean, I've been doing fires for a lot of years, and it always seems to be, oop, you need to add this to do this, rooftop units, et cetera, like that part of it. It usually falls back on the supplier, which within my mid-stable, what you should have known that part of the code. How does that all work, when you talk about all the things that need to be done, from mechanical to electrical to?
Yeah. I mean, so ultimately, it's the contractor, the building owner that's doing the project that needs to comply. There's a couple of different scenarios there. The architect will sometimes have, on the plans, a generic note, you know, comply with NFPA 13. Well, okay, that's good enough for plan review, and we can issue you a permit, but it didn't really tell the guy in the field everything he needed to know to do the job. So you can have that issue. We can't prevent that one, you know? That's what, the purpose of our plan review is to prevent issues in the field. But the note suffices, right? I mean, that's, they tell us it's going to be done this way, we issue the permit. The other thing that comes up in that is, you know, maybe a designer, we actually have to go the other way sometimes, too, where we'll go out and inspect, where the designer says, okay, this is going to be a two-hour wall. That's the way the plans were drawn and approved. Building code may not require a two-hour wall, maybe it's one-hour wall. So if we can get into the project and they decide to make a change, or they're saying, well, why did the building department make us put the two-hour wall in? Well, we didn't. Architect designed it, and we made sure that it was done to plans. Now, they would certainly have the option to change their plans, show us the one-hour wall, and that's what we would approve, if it still met that minimum standard. Does that make sense?
Brian, maybe, maybe this is asked, I missed it, but I'm just kind of looking at the bottom of this page where it says, regarding certain scenarios where there's alternatives to sprinkling, I don't know if I missed this, but what are some of those options?
Well, it's really about scoping. When you're talking about these buildings, it depends how you scope the project. When you get into, for example, if you have a, if you have a two-unit building, or two residential units above a B, so that's a mercantile, which would be typical, if you only have two units, that could be considered an R3, and you're allowed to have those two units and do the whole thing without sprinkling. Then you get into the 50% rule, if you have more than that, you get, say, three units up there. If, if you scope your project, if it's a small project in scope, you're only doing one unit, the designer shows us that on the plan, right? So if you're doing 33% of this floor, no sprinklings required. And that's what the code path that they would tell us, we would review it and approve the plans, do the inspections. Now, if that same person elected to do all three of those units, they'd be over the 50%. The project is big, right? I mean, they're not doing a small remodel, they're doing a big project. Then they have to bring it up to, they wouldn't have that option to not sprinkle it, they would have to comply with the code as it's set out in the building code, essentially where it is. Rehab code gives you those extra options so that the smaller projects are still feasible. I mean, that's why it's, that's why we have that whole book. You're still required to sprinkle, though. When I, two years ago, well, year and a half ago, started, I called down, and I said, oh, you got to fully, be fully fire suppressed. Not only that, I was told I had to drywall my ceiling in and my mercantile part of my building. That was $65,000, and that pushes the budget way, way over. I go and I have another phone conversation, and I says, well, we have a building on our block, they got it done, it's a public building built with public dollars, there's no fire suppressing on it. So why am I being, you know, ruled out? And I couldn't really get a real answer. Much more discussion happened, I came back, okay, fine, you can use domestic water pressure and only have to sprinkle commensurate areas. I'll agree with that, and I haven't written these. To this day, I've never received it, and I've asked three times. You haven't asked me for that, right? No. If we, this is a project we've talked about. Now, you and I, we, but Ron. Eric, next door, went to the same headache and asked, and finally, he had to come see you and get it resolved. I understand that the rehab code book is open for interpretation. I owned a construction company for many, many years, I'm well aware of, you know, everything that's involved. The one thing that's always bugged me about the rehabilitation code book is, it's open to interpretation by each individual department. In other words, there's no set, there's no set standard. Like a wall, we all know the wall has to be built, if you're going to have a drywall inspection, we know we got to have 20 screws, can't break the paper, there's lots of things that we know. The rehab book is more of a guideline for the building inspector, your office, and the inspector to look at and interpret how they see it. And I found that it's been different everywhere else, and that sometimes plays in the inconsistency sometimes that we all see. It's hard enough to be, to spend money in this town, you know, put $300,000 into a building, and then you start, you get $2,000 prints drawn up, and then you're told, well, you know, that's not right in the rehab book. Well, if my architect's reading the same thing, and you guys are reading the same thing, now I got to scrap the things and make it, you know, in accordance. So until all these issues get hammered out, we backed off from doing any work in our building, because I'm not going to spend any more money. And that's kind of the problem on this whole Main Street. There's just no consistency. I think if we had consistency for the town, you'd see the town doing a lot more of these construction projects. I think what you're talking about is, what's hard for any department to do is provide an answer without the complete question, a full scope of what it is. You saw how difficult it is to lay out all these different scenarios, is it a two, is it an R2, R3, two-unit, three-unit, you know, what's above it, what's below it, how much are you doing? Until you tell us all of that stuff, you're not going to get an answer, a good answer from me, or Ron, or any other department you want to talk to. If you just ask just a little bit of information, we can't give you that answer. It's not our fault, right? We didn't get enough information. If you go to a designer and have them draw the plans, and work through all those issues with you, and have a complete look at it, then you can take advantage of some of those details, some of those options that are available to you under the rehab code.
Brian, is that conveyed to the applicant when they, when they make contact with you? Is that conveyed to them that maybe, you know, because, and the reason I ask this is because maybe this, you know, I think, I think what you're saying is correct, is maybe the right question isn't being asked, and there's, you're only talking about a small portion of it, but is it something that, you know, I don't know if you guys do this, but I mean, when you tell the, you know, the applicant, is there some, you know, scenario where you can say, hey, this may not answer your question because there's all these other things? Is there anything you convey, could they?
We do it every time. Every time somebody calls, because we can't give them the answer, they want, and we know that if we did give an answer, it's just going to, it's just going to blow up on us. We can't give somebody the wrong answer, you know? That's where you get inconsistency. I, we can't do it. Like this, this other person, I think, did you mention Eric? Yeah, I met with him the other day, and when we sat down, and he brings, you bring a plan, and you show us the whole scenario, I can, I can walk you right through it and tell you what the code would allow. You still have to have a designer do that process, seal those plans, and provide it to the city so we can issue them a permit. But now I can answer a code question. I can't design a building, I'm not an architect, but I, if somebody had, it brings all the information to me, gives me a specific question, we can answer the codes. We know the code, that's what we do. But there's so many variables that you have to have to be able to give a correct answer. I mean, that's the challenge, you know, and that's why we always direct people to, you know, to do their homework and get with that architect, and yet, it costs money, but the last thing you want to do is get into one of these projects with all of that done up front.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. It just seems to me that there's a lot of inconsistency on the same page. If you push hard enough, you get a different answer. It just, you'd rather have no answer than have different answers.
Right. Well, that's what we try to do, and, you know, your experience, that doesn't sound, that's not the way I want, the feedback I want to hear-
I realize.
-work with our, you know, and I work with Ron every day, I work with the rest of our inspectors, we talk about this all the time. We, we try to be, we really strive to be consistent in what we do. And this other gentleman I know has been sending us information for over a year. I'll do this, what if I do this? And from day one, just get with an architect. But, you know, he went, this person went to an architect and struggled, the architect couldn't help him.
Right, he didn't know, yeah, that architect didn't know what the rehab code, you know, my architect does, but.
So he, you know, you should be able to, you know the parameters, that's the same thing with, the last thing you want from a building department is to have changing parameters, you know? It's, the code is the minimum standard. If you show compliance with that, you'll get your permit and do your project, and it'll go smoothly. I think that's, I think that's what you want from your building department.
I just know that when we were doing new buildings, you guys were great to work with, and these old buildings, it always seemed like we struggled to get through. But a new building up, it was never a problem, never an issue. So I'll give you kudos on that.
Thank you.
Is that because the older buildings have more interpretation then? Is that where the struggle comes in, where?
Well, I think in the design, there is so much in the scoping that needs to be laid out ahead of time. And if things change along the way, I can see where, if somebody started that one unit, and say the sculpting was different, and then we get out on site, and all of a sudden, we've got two units under construction, well, wait a minute, you know, now we're in a whole different ballgame. You can run into problems, but if you do what you put out in the plans and all that information is accurate, we can't, we can't prevent, we can't say, oh, everything's going to go smoothly. Things change, you know? If, if the project scope changed, there, there can be issues. We have to enforce the code. Any building department does, that's our job. But we, we advise people to get with their designer and work out all those details, provide it to us, and we can verify that it meets those requirements before we get out into the field and run into those issues. The other thing you ever mentioned, you know, about the wall in the building, is that a drywalled ceiling you're talking about?
Yeah, they, I was going to start building, just got the old wood ceiling in it, you know?
Yeah, so was that, was that rated wall on the plans? Was that, I mean, where did this come from?
From Ron. We weren't touching the main floor, we weren't doing anything. And then I was told I had to drywall that in, which is almost, I mean, it can be done, it's going to shut me down for a month, and I'd added another $17,000 to the cost. It was little things like that that just drove me absolutely insane.
Well, that's more than a little thing. I mean, if it's not on the plans-
At that point, I'd had, it was, you know, just, because it was just, where do you end? You know, these buildings are only worth so much money, you can only put so much in, it's just a timeline that, you know, all developers have to, have to go and see. But we weren't doing anything on the main floor, not, we weren't touching it at all. The print I have doesn't say anything about the main floor. I, I did know wherever we made, you know, violations in the floor, or water line or whatever come up- line or whatever come up. We would have to fire approve that area. Other than to, to...
Yeah, there could be a number of things. I mean, if it was something that was just missed by the, by the architect that submitted the plans and wasn't shown on the plans and we get out on site and see something that needs to be addressed, I can understand that. Show me how this still complies with, hey, we didn't know there was a business below this thing. It wasn't clear on the drawings. You know? And it sounds like it got worked out with, with another submitter rather than having to go through and... So that's a good outcome. But if you don't like what your inspector's doing on, on any job, the inspector's got a boss. If you don't like what that department does, that department has a boss. Everybody's got somebody to answer to. And, um, you know, that's the way, sometimes you have to do that.
Yeah, nobody likes to do it that way.
Well...
Because we, just sometimes it, it... Sometimes it doesn't always work out nicely.
I understand. Again, you know, I'm here to respond to this, uh, RFP that was put out. And I, frankly, I don't like to do it that way either. I feel like I, I'm hearing about this specific issue that I haven't, uh, completely unaware of. And I don't even know how long ago this was. But from my perspective, we're your building department. We're the City of Hall's building department. We, we want the same things that you guys do. If there's ever any questions or concerns or, uh, you know, I'm available all the time. Let's make sure that you're getting the quality that you want. But I feel very confident that the quality of the product that we put out there is gonna be, um, is as good as you can get. I think this is, we have a good product. We try very hard to be consistent in all the things that, that you would want as a community.
Brian, what com, what other communities do you represent now currently?
So we have, of course, we have Cascade, Ada Township, Grand Rapids Township, East Grand Rapids, Lowell Township, City of Lowell. We do trades in Plainfield and Bridgens.
Electrical and mechanical.
And Bridgens.
You do, you're the building official for Plainfield?
No. Yeah, they're on building inspector.
Okay.
Bridgens has their own building official too.
Okay.
Okay. Here's, this is how I see it, okay? You go out, I don't think really that we shouldn't have done this RFP at all, but I view them as city staff, right? For the most part. And it's been like that. I'm not gonna RFP your job or Suzie's job or the chief's job. It's just not how it works. So you go out and do another business, company, whatever, you're not gonna get the hours that we get Cascade, right? Where there's gonna be a cost associated with their services where I'm correct that we make money technically off this. A portion of the permits come back to us.
Correct.
You're not gonna get that. You're going then, so if you own two buildings, one in Lowell Township and one in the city, you gotta go do two things. But right now, you can just do one. All we're doing all the time is preaching about, we're going to townships and developing a better relationship. Using the same services goes a long way to that. So I don't... I personally would like to see, I think all these issues can be resolved with just better communication. And that's on us and on them and on the building owners and on the developers, whoever. I just think an RFP is kind of a backdoor way to go about this. I don't agree with it. I'd like to see it completely pulled off the table. Um, and then we can go back to just working on basic, normal communication like you would if you had a problem with Suzie or like you would if you had a problem with Steve or if Steve had a problem with somebody. We wouldn't RFP those jobs because we haven't communicated the right way. I just think that's the wrong way to do it. I think, and honestly, I think it's kind of insulting. I do. I, if I was them, I would be mildly insulted. But that's just how I feel, so I wanted to say that before we make any decisions on this. Also, I talked to Shannon from the fire department today and they couldn't say enough good things about their relationship. And they cover both townships and the city. And they couldn't say enough good things about working with Cascade to get these fire codes done, these building inspections done and get questions answered, so complaints should also come with compliments, so there's that. That's where I sit on it, at least.
Obviously, I was directed to do this, so I did what I was told and I did it. And, um, where I sit, where my staff sits, Suzie and Steve deal with Cascade more than I do. The only complaints I've heard about Cascade are the store buildings. Everything else, we have no, we have no issues. And, you know, I'm, and my interpretation is, you know, building code's a building code. Obviously, it sounds like there's obviously been some communication breakdowns. And maybe that's something, I think that's something we can, I think we can work that out. My concern is somebody else coming in here. There is one firm that I can tell you, if they were even to submit a proposal, they're getting thrown out. We're not even gonna call, we're not even gonna talk to them. I, I have employees, I have employees who quit if, if they came back. Um, so they're not even gonna be considered, even if we went forward. My concern is, is the convenience it is for the residents and the way things have been done for a number of years, changing that on the residents who come here. That, that is a concern of mine from an administrative standpoint. My concern is taking on more administrative burden that we don't necessarily need to do.
And a cost.
Right. And, but if the council truly wants to go with another firm, I mean, that's, that's well within your right. Be very hard for me, even if we were to get RFQs, to make a recommendation besides Cascade. Because when they cover most of the surrounding area, they... From, from where we sit administratively, we don't, we don't get many complaints. You know, you're always gonna get some. But I would, I would hate to, if there was a way we could try and resolve this so we didn't have to go through this process, I would prefer that. It'd be easier.
What do you think, sorry to interrupt, what do you think that maybe you don't get all those complaints because they handle it on their end before it even gets to you? Right? So there's no reason that, that can't happen with this. I just, I just don't understand why we're not just talking about it. Like, how do we fix the communication side of it? Because that's the problem, not Cascade's building. I don't, I don't personally think that that's a problem. I could be wrong. But that's how I see it.
I can speak on some of the homeowners that I want to talk to about this situation. And what they wanna do, they, they wanna have somebody that's gonna come in fair, do a quality job and then hold the contractors responsible if, if they made a mistake or why it wasn't passed. I've had them come to my house four times. One time, one other four times it did not pass. And that's because the guy didn't run the gas line ring. And it took me a while to get it done, but, you know, it's his license and that part of it. So speaking with homeowners, that's what they want. They want somebody fair and reasonable and to be, be there when, when they need it.
What is this up to, so?
Their contract expires June 30th. The RFQ deadline, if you don't directly to end it, would be a couple of months.
I would just hate to see us on a different page than Tim and Jerry and the fire department. And just, for what? For a correctable problem, in my opinion, communication. And you know what? You can't say all these complaints aren't situations like Jim's. Right? That wasn't Jim's mistake. It was the contractor's mistake. It wasn't their mistake. It was the contractor's mistake. So all these complaints, are they necessarily complaining about the right entity? The, how do you... Really, that if you bring in an outside company that were, "Well, we have too many contracts, right? So we'll be available to Lowell residents Tuesday from noon to four and Friday from six to whatever." Then no, 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 no. And then how do we go about educating people? They're still gonna go to Cascade. They're still gonna move from the township here, which is, I can do what we want, and go to Cascade and Brian's supposed to tell them, "Sorry, I can't help you." I'd like to see this RFP completely pulled and and we can work on the communication, which I think is really the only problem there. I haven't heard one complaint about cost. I haven't heard one complaint about how long it takes. I haven't heard one complaint about not being able to get ahold of Brian. I haven't heard one complaint about anything except for reading how you read the code, I guess. And it's not even the other two codes, it's just the rehab code. I think that's such a correctable problem. I just think an RFP is a, it's the wrong way to go. I think it's the wrong way to go. Personally.
You make a lot of great points. And Brian, thanks for coming on. Appreciate it. I, you're right, lack of communication, we can fix that.
We've done it before.
Yep, absolutely.
So what's the direction of council? Where am I gonna be directed, what am I gonna be directed to?
I will make a motion that we pull the RFQ for building services.
I'll support.
We need a discussion on it? Anybody else? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield has excused himself. And Mayor D'War?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Keep your head here. All right, Michael, let's use the last forty-some-odd minutes. We'll wait for Greg to get back and then we'll discuss retiree healthcare. Welcome back.
I don't have anything in front of you tonight to talk about, um, but this is an issue that is facing us, is, is retiree healthcare going forward. And really, what the biggest issue is, has been the changes to the laws that happened this past winter. They, the state basically, the state took, initially took a much more aggressive stance to where I felt they were actually trying to eliminate retiree healthcare going forward. Um, and, or even actually for current, you know, for people who are about to retire and, and current retirees, which I had significant issues with. Um, and I know a lot of communities across the state had the same issue. And, um, through some of the work of the Michigan Municipal League, they actually came down with a much more watered-down, laws regarding retiree healthcare pension reform and all that. So basically what, with the new laws, what basically happens now is we have a, we have an audit. They audit our, our retiree healthcare through the OPEB and they also do, they will also audit our MERS. If you become into a situation where your, uh, you're, with the retiree, with the pension issue, if you're below 60% funded, then that triggers the state to have you come in to, for them to contact you to start putting corrective action plans in place. We already have a corrective action plan. I do not since we only make 60%. We're about 67 right now. Um, so we're gonna be correcting that issue on July 1st when we, when employees start contributing 2% more. And the city can makes the, you know, the continued payment they're making now. So that, that issue over time is going to correct itself. Um, the other issue is, is with our retiree healthcare. There, the, the new standard is going to be is if you fall... The first thing they're gonna do is require all employees that are hired after June 30th that they have to, that their normal costs have to be pre-funded. So basically what that, what that entails is when you, I can kind of, best way to simply explain it is in the audit, they have, they have, they have what's called AR, which is technically your annual retirement contrib- uh, annual retirement contribution that you, you should make to fully fund your system. There's no stipulations in place that you actually have to make that. And, um, but what they also do is they break those, in those, in that AR, they break it down called to norm, there's, there's something called normal cost. And basically what it is, it is the cost per year of an employee that you would need to contribute for them to have a fully supplemental, fully, functional retiree healthcare, uh, plan. So basically, when they retire 25 years, they'll have enough money, there'll be enough money available to be able to fund their retiree healthcare for the prescribed plan that you have. This has never been an issue for us. And if you actually look at our OPEB, it probably looks like it's a lot worse than it really is because we only have a couple retirees at a time. We, we budget for it as paid you go. It's never been an issue for us. It, it's really never been an issue because our retiree healthcare is, when you, when you reach the MERS definition of retirement, so either 15 years of service and age 55 or 25 years of service and age 55, you, you are eligible for the MERS retirement. So you have, the, the cutoff is age 55. So you could, you could start here when you're 20 years old, you have to work till you're 55. And then at that point in time, you would receive the same retire, you would, you would receive the same healthcare benefit the employees receive for five years until you reach age 65. This really hasn't been a major issue for us. Um, and, and I'm, what I'm not, what I'm not proposing is any changes really to the, uh, to what we do with our retirees, our current employees now. Would really, really fall into place as the future employees because now they're gonna start requiring us to fund those costs. And not so sure it's a, it's a real sustainable practice. Most communities statewide have, have basically eliminated the retiree healthcare benefit going forward. They've, they've, they've kept everyone who's eligible for it now to be in it. And then going forward, they, most communities have just gotten out of it. Because it is, it is an increased cost on the community, on the city, and it's something that, um, it, it's just, we're one of the only states that actually has retiree healthcare for municipal employees. It's really become an anomaly for our state and it's going, and it's going away. I wanna come back to the council, obviously, with more detailed information, but, what I would actually like to propose to the council at some point is a elimination of the retiree healthcare going forward. And it would start with me. It would start the day I was hired. So any employee starting after September 6, 2016 would not be eligible for this anymore. Um, there's some things that have to be done in order for that to be done. One would be council resolution. There might be some language in, at least in the, in the IDW contract that we would have to negotiate out. But, um, it's something I think going forward, we really need to consider. So everyone knows, um, even with retirees now, they, what I've actually learned is actually the retiree actually, right now, gets a better benefit from the, than the employee does because the retiree to actually, they don't pay the 20, they don't, they only pay the taxes going forward. They don't, and they're, they have, they have the deductible just like everyone else. It's like they pay their deductible, but where the employee has to pay the deductible, either a $2,000 or $4,000, cost to them whether it's a single individual or family. They also have to pay, um, roughly 12% of the, of the premium where the, the retiree doesn't have to, to provide that. So one of the things that we're actually going to be working on is actually, as I told you in your memo on Friday, we received a 7.4% increase to our healthcare. That healthcare plan is no longer sustainable. And, um, I already have been in talks with Hub International, who manages our plans. We are gonna be talking about changing plans, which actually would be cheaper. It's cheaper for the community, it's cheaper to the city. Some of the proposals we're looking at are just gonna be cheaper to the city. Um, and it's actually gonna be cheaper to the employee for some of the things that we're looking to propose. And what I would propose would actually be, would be, would be even for the retiree and the...